...project is we're gonna look to do what's called refund some debt. We have some debt that's callable right now, which means is eligible to be refunded, which in very simplistic terms it means we're refinancing. Uh, we're looking at initially refunding the 2002 debt, um, and that's about 2.25 billion dollars worth of debt. If we go through this refunding process, we're looking at moving interest rates that were around four and a half to five percent interest, and with the market being what it is, we think we could get an interest rate between three and a half and four percent interest. Uh, in very simplistic terms, we look at at the net present value savings of about 286,000 dollars, uh, to the utility system, uh, by sending by doing what's called by a simple refinance of these, uh, of these 2002 series bonds. And so that's what we're here tonight to talk to you about, is issuing, uh, debt and selling bonds for series 2014, refunding some debt, uh, from 2002 to do so to lower interest rate and save the system money. The third step of this process is that we're not here to address tonight, just give you a preview of what's coming next spring, is we would look to refund again our 2005 series bonds. That's about a little over 7 billion dollars worth of bonds, again, in 2005, when the market was such that it was, we borrowed money at a higher interest rate. The market is better now, uh, the long-term indications are that the market will stay better than it was in 2005. So in the spring sometime, in the April, May timeframe, we're gonna come back to you again, and go through the process of refunding, uh, the 2005 debt as well, in hopes of saving the system even more money. So, uh, we, we come to you with this, with this plan, uh, that we have, uh, that we've put forth. I've talked to you extensively in our, uh, where we, our rate study here a few months ago, and we're gonna come visit you each year and talk about our, our budget each of the last few years, that we are constantly looking for ways to save money. And by save money, I don't necessarily mean buy cheap or cut coin. We're looking for ways to make better use of our citizens, the citizens of Wilson County, better use of the money they pay in their electric utility rates. And so that's, uh, that's kind of the mantra of the system right now, is that we wanna make sure that we will spend the money we need to spend, we wanna make sure that it's being spent prudently, efficiently, and in a way that, that is best served for our citizens. So, uh, part, part of the process is to go to each of the smaller cities. Uh, I went last week to the city of Stockdale, and they passed a resolution of support of this bond initiative. On Monday night of next week, I'll go to city of, city council, ask them to pass the same resolution of support. City of Florisville does not have to pass a resolution of support since you're the ones essentially issuing the debt, uh, or we're issuing the debt under your name, so I don't need a resolution of support, we need from you instead, is approval of the preliminary official statement, uh, that we're here tonight to talk about. So I'm gonna turn to my colleagues and see if there's anything else that I need to, to brief you on, uh, that you think would be good to add, and then of course I will open ourselves up for, for questions from any of you.
Mr. Dicker, since this is, um, this debt is issued under the umbrella of the city of Florisville, how does it affect the citizens?
Would you say it can affect them something?
Since the debt is issued under the umbrella of the city of Florisville, how does that affect Florisville?
The city of Florisville? Uh, there, there's no effect at all directly. It, uh, it's, which typically be tied to the finances of the Florisville Light and Power System. Um, so the way you ask how to affect your citizens, if you just, you know, do the arrangements, expenditures, and the work that we do on the electrical system here in town, not just up in Wood and Hope or Stockdale or in the rural areas. So there would be no direct impact on the, you know, the tax rate or, or any fees or services from the city. This is, this is, we issue it under, under the same umbrella, but the finances, debt repayment, all the work is strictly, uh, in our financial system.
But under the same umbrella, you have a total of ten and a half million dollars that the city of Florisville can, can essentially, I mean, utilize, correct?
No, sir. Um, for the bank qualified debt that I mentioned before, there's 10 million dollars per year that you can borrow, uh, and get bank qualified money. And that 10 million dollars is a combination of what Florisville, the city of Florisville borrowed, and the Florisville Light and Power System, and the lease purchase agreements that either the two systems have. Right now, I believe according to the finance for advisor, uh, the city of Florisville has just over 200,000 dollars in lease purchase agreements right now. So we, the most that we could take this year in state bank qualified is about 9.8 billion dollars. We rent, we've pulled it down to 9.5 for a couple of reasons. First of all, uh, in case we're in lease, uh, agreements that the city has that we were not aware of, and, uh, so we don't exceed that 10 million, and so, like I said, the needs. So you asked if there's 10 million dollars the city of Florisville can pull from?
Basically, what, what I'm asking is, if Phelps takes out, you know, nine million dollars, and say the city of Florisville has a catastrophic, you know, sewer plant blows up or something, we will not be able to utilize any of the plans that Phelps takes out.
No, sir. Those two sets of votes are wholly and fully separate.
So it would take our ability to, to borrow?
Yes, sir, and, and, uh, Mr. Gero, the part of the Phelps plan is going, well, you do it only once every three years, and is so, and we work in conjunction with the city of Florisville's, uh, financial advisors staff, and we asked them, and we started this process.
Matt, uh, Matt, it's a living. Yeah. Clay Benford representing, uh, the, uh, system at Bond Council, you asked a question from a catastrophic perspective. The designation of a bank qualified issuance of debt is an affirmation based on the information that we have at the time of the issuance of the debt, but we do not expect that we'll issue one to 10 million on any of those, which means that you get a reset every January 1st, so that you could go into your own bank qualified debt. Now, if you had a catastrophic event, I wanna pick on the city of West, but let's say something like the city of West happened, that would be the type of catastrophic event that we would go to the service and say, hey, we had no idea this would happen, uh, can we please proceed, and we would expect that we would get some kind of alimony seeking in that kind of a scenario. But absent something of that magnitude, I think that you should expect that until January 1st, this will satisfy, it will sub, it will subsume, absorb the entirety of the city bank qualified authorization for the 2014 calendar year. But by the time we get to the delivery of the funds, there will be about two months of your left and three months of your life, so very short of what, period of time.
And, and again, you know, we, we didn't make these plans swiftly, and we didn't make these plans without considering the needs and, and, uh, plans of the city of Florisville. We, we checked with your financial staff, they made very clear to us that Florisville had no plans in your financial, uh, forecast to issue any debt this year, that's why we went, uh, for this year. Next year's a different story. Uh, Victor Caro has indicated to us that next year, the city may look to issue a certain amount of debt, and, uh, which is, which is fine, so the city can do it in one year, we can do it the next, and we can alternate back and forth, or we can work in conjunction with each other, that where the city issues four and a half million, Phelps will, four and a half million or, or whatnot. So this is, this is not something that's done in a vacuum, with just the needs of funds of mine. We did, uh, quite a bit of conference replying with, with these cities' financial budgets as well, that were related to planning.
Mr. Dicker, you want to meet with you actor, he met with us, uh, with the meeting?
Uh, actually, uh, he met with their bond counsel, and we made conversation, wanted to do that part to him coming to present to the council.
Okay, so he's aware of?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that you need to, that you all, you all wanted to do the, uh, to refund the bonds of 2002 this year, and then 2008 next year?
Two, 2005.
Oh, 2005, I'm sorry.
Yes.
2005 next year, so you're gonna come back, you know, this year and next year for re-issuance of the bonds?
Yes, and the next year's, uh, refund, like I said, was about 7.2 million dollars, but if the, uh, city of Florisville's financial plan changes, the reason we did that is because it was indicated to us, Florisville only intended to borrow about 2 million, uh, next year, so the 2 million plus our 7.2 million refunding keeps us under the 10 million account. If the Florisville financial plan changes, and you need 3 million or 4 million, we will obviously back off and refund less of that debt than we originally planned.
You had me mention earlier that there was an 11 and a half million dollar forecast, and you're, you're saying you want nine and a half this year, next year you want another seven and a half?
No, it's not an additional seven and a half, it's a refunding of existing debt, is what it is. No, we're not asking for more money next year, we're asking for more money, re, uh, refinance.
I would, I would need to, like, okay?
No, yeah, it's not, it's not a double, it will show as of the issuance, but it's an issuance at a better interest rate for money that we have already borrowed. Refinancing approximately seven and a half million dollars of the 2005 bonds, but it's not what you consider the new.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I would like to adopt this motion, thank you. I have a motion, may I have a second?
May I have a second?
You have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo, second by Councilwoman Willess, two for all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All win. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Madam Chairman, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go on to item two, B, consideration in action to alter the Florisville general election for Tuesday, November the 4th, 2014.
We have to order your action for, and I have to publish it, we think, for Florisville to be approved, we just, we, you just need to say it for it to order your election. Motion, second.
Mayor, I would like to order the Florida general election for Tuesday, November 4th, 2014.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Guedero, second by Councilwoman Lutus, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, fine, sir. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go on to item two, C, consideration in action to approve a 20-foot variance for the watch building to be placed in the property of 901 Fifth Street. Good evening, Mayor, Council, what we have here, what we have is, um, you received a building application from Patricia Riley on June 10th for a storage building placed in the property of 901 Fifth Street. The variance application was submitted to my office on July 7th. The variance is for a setback of 20 feet from the Spanish Street side. The building will be purchased from Leland's of Florisville. It is an enclosed building of 520 square feet, to be placed in an existing concrete pad. According to the ordinance, chapter 150-1, it states that permanent structures, including mobile homes, shall have a minimum front building setback line of at least 25 feet, where a corner lot is a key lot, where lots face the front of street, and other lots face the side street. The corner lot shall have at least a minimum building setback line on both streets, where the corner lot is not a key lot, and shall have a minimum building setback line on the side street of at least 25 feet. What we have here is, the property is not in a bloodline, it will not go over the 40% coverage rule. The property is owned by Patricia Riley's mother, who is deceased, but she has gotten permission from the executor of the will, Daniel Riley, that, um, is giving her the authority to modify, update, remodel, and add additions to the property. Do you have any questions? What they're asking for is a 20-foot, uh, side setback. There's an existing concrete pad there at this time. Um, their insurance requires them to get a covered building because they want to store a plastic car.
What is the recommendation?
I recommend, I did get approval from P&amp;Z, um, in a P&amp;Z meeting, um, and they approved it, and I also, I see no negative impact to have the storage building placed there.
Just for, well, or just for the, just?
Just the storage, I'm sorry.
So there won't be any, uh?
There's no electricity, no power?
No.
No. And did this ordinance require for those to be sent to the neighbors? No, no.
We could motion to approve a variance for a garage building to be placed in the property of 9, 901 Fifth Street.
I have a second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Willess, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, fine, sir. Now, we're gonna go on to two, B, consideration in action to approve a variance for the size of the front property in order to place a manufactured home. The current size is 50 feet wide, which does not recommend the size of the front of lots that you'd like to, at the address of 1510 G Street. The applicant is seeking a 25-foot variance to place a new manufactured home. Mayor, Council, what we have here is Robert Leland, who is the owner of property 1510 G Street, submitted for a variance approval on July 27th for the size of the lot to place a manufactured home. The manufacturer home applicant is Mark Mendez. He is planning to purchase a 2014, uh, 1,216 square foot home. And again, according to the ordinance, chapter 152-3, under the definition of subdivision, it states that each tract so remaining has an adequate road frontage of not less than 75 feet on a public, and such like performed to the minimum lot size, which includes 75 by 100 feet, as specified herein. Mr. Leland lot, Mr. Leland's lot has a frontage of 50 feet and a depth of 150. The size of the mobile home will not go over the 40% rule that is indicated in chapter 153-031, section C3. Again, the lot is not in a bloodline. Uh, I received the application of manufactured home on August 5th, working with the mobile home applicant on receiving all the signatures of the property homeowners within 250 property. Um, I did receive all the signatures as of today. There are, all the utilities are in place, your water's thorough and electric, and they're planning to remove the older home, and they have been already removing it at this time, to replace with a new 2014 manufactured home. My comments to this variance application is that, that requesting a variance of 25-foot frontage size of the lot, there's no negative or adverse impact to the area in placing the manufactured home. I recommended approval, and it was approved by the planning and zoning as well. Again, what you're looking at is the size of the lot, the requirement on the front is to be 75 feet, they only have 50. The home that was there previously was there before these ordinances were sent, so.
But it was approved, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, uh, we're elected motion to approve a variance of the size of the front property, or, uh, the manufactured home, uh, the current size of 50, which does not recommend the size of the front of lots, 25 feet, at the address of 1510 V Street.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Guedero, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Lutus, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, fine, sir. Now, we're gonna go on to item two, E, consideration in action to approve an inter-local agreement with Wilson County for health inspections. You know, sticking there into the council, uh, as discussed at our last little workshop, we talked about, and have been talking about for some time, the health inspection. And so this is an local agreement between the city of Florisville and Wilson County regarding health inspection and grease trap inspections. Uh, so both attorneys have looked at this, this is the final draft. Uh, based on your approval or any of the comments or change that you have, we can take it to Wilson County in reference to, um, allow the inspection process to start in that once that comment has approved it. Uh, basically, it's going to do all, everything that has anything to do with food is perishable. So it's also our food establishment, anybody who sells things is perishable, will follow with the health inspection. And so also the grease, because the grease that we're having, the problem with, and any of the big, the grease problems that we're having, because it's gonna help us on a grease trap enforcement. That was one of the things that we indicated in the TCAQ, is that we have a grease trap ordinance, but we didn't have the enforcement to it. It should be tied to health inspections, and so this is the, uh, the inter-local agreement, uh, something similar to the one that we had before, uh, going forward to the city council, as well as Wilson County.
Is this counter, are there also the, the, uh, modernized, uh, vehicles that set up on the side of the road in Central Ohio?
Anyone who has a, uh, who sells food in the city of Florisville, that's perishable, yes. They will have to be, if, anything, it talks about it in reference to outdoor, so even people from the peanut festival for temporary setups, they have to go through the health inspections as well.
We could motion to approve a, a local agreement with the Wilson County for health inspections.
Yeah, a motion by Councilwoman Willess, can I have a second? I second. Second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, fine, sir. Thank you.
Matt, Mayor, as a point of order and correct record, there are only four councilmen here, and you have said 5-0 in the numbers on all of the above-mentioned items.
You're correct. I will go back to still to count. You're in my house. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go on to item two, F, consideration in action to approve ordinance 2014-008, amending the 2013-2014 budget.
I would, good evening, and, uh, I'm here to present a budget amendment, uh, for General Fund, which is Fund 301, for the Municipal Court Technology Fund 430, and for the Municipal Court Security Fund 440. The General Fund budget amendment entails to broker and book 39,000 dollars received from government capital to fund to the purchase of the new police car. This is funding that was coming, coming from a, uh, capital group, and, uh, I placed it on the revenue account, and then we have the corresponding expenditures, including the purchase of the car. For the Municipal Court Technology Fund, we are, um, proposing to increase the capital outlet for 12,000 dollars to fund the completion of the CUPSEC program. Uh, the Municipal Court needs to do the upgrade for the ink code technology, including, uh, three computers, uh, the inner facing of the, the system into ink code, and also, uh, a yearly fee of 1,300. For the Municipal Court Security, Security Fund, we're recommending a 2,000 dollar budget increase to do a security door exit for the facilities that are right now, uh, housing the Municipal Courts. To enter the Municipal Court right now, there's only one front entrance, and if something were to happen in there, there's no other exit to get out of there.
2,000 dollars?
2,000 dollars. We didn't have any specific amount, so we estimated that it was 200,000. I do know that there is a letter attached to the paperwork from the, um, the Municipal Court Judge, where she's requesting this, this, and this fund.
And, and Councilwoman Mayor, um, there's also some electricity relative to the connection to the wall, as well as a special lock system that they need to lift and open, so it'll automatically, in case they need to, that's a present type of purpose, so there's electricity involved in this opening as well, as well as through hardening the door, so that's why it's more than, uh, just that.
Did it in the 2,000?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Because they need to be able to, you can imagine, you need to be able to, be able to access that, they need to have special locks, and then they need to have a light. They're gonna connect through, actually, that door right there, it's a dark, you need to be able to put some light in there, so it's a small light, you know, to, to. The money's coming from the Technology Fund?
I have talked to the judge, yes, yes.
The, the, sorry, the, the Security Fund, uh, that's what we just talked to in the workshop, and our direction to staff is to get it done as soon as possible, so we can do it in this fiscal year, so this actually talks about the hardware, the software, the discovered in the workshop, whether who needs the ink code that we talked about in the workshop, and all the security issue, this is the, but we know that we're directed to staff to give it, and we can do it as soon as possible.
I think you all said that this was money that was already allocated from, or for, for the budgeted operating for this.
It was actually budgeted for, it was actually directed to be funded.
Correct.
But it is money that's only registered.
Correct.
If after, after the package of the Police Department, uh, uh, check of the funding in the WCC, or the invoices to pay everything, is a letter of the Municipal Judge requesting this funding.
May, I would like to make a value of, what is 0 to that, and, uh, do you really have any serious?
Right.
I would like to.
Is that okay?
Well, I, I think, uh, they have a, they have a, they have a, I appreciate. The contents will be noticed in the public, what it seems, uh, the number itself.
Please put that in your paper, more than Judge Monster Office, who has the power to lock it.
Mayor, when we make the motion, can we include the, um, the length of the funds and the number of the funds in the, uh, in the motion? So, so, I would to approve, uh, ordinance 2014 to 2011, and 2013 budget for General Fund 301, Municipal Court Technology Fund 430, and Municipal Court Security Fund 440. Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Guedero, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, fine, sir. Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item two, G, which is consideration in action to hold a first reading of an ordinance adopted an amendment to the city of Florisville's Code of Ordinances, authorizing the city to issue stop work orders on construction projects for violations of federal laws, state laws, county regulations, city regulations, and ordinances, building codes, and municipal franchise agreements, and establishing civil and criminal penalties for violations of the stop work order.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, what we're here to do today is to implement a general catchall into the, the code ordinances for when there are violations of any of the linear matters that are addressed there in the item. Currently, the really only solution that the city has is to come in, uh, contact the booth's office, go into district court, file an injunction, go through all that process and procedure at expense to stop a violation of these while it's occurring. Uh, this would establish a catchall administrative procedure that would be handled in-house by the, the permitting staff here, in, for them to, so they could go out, put a stop work order on a project for any of these violations, and then until that situation is remedied to the satisfaction of the city, no further work would be allowed to be done on that project. It allows for a non-judicial remedy, uh, to be been in-house, and that's the, the purpose and goal of this ordinance here.
And then this would be tied directly to the location in, in violation?
Yes, it would be, uh, part of the ordinance in here is it would have to be put in a conspicuous place at the location itself, it would provide notice to the owner, the contractor, subcontractors, everybody at that location.
Now, is this legal that we can do this?
Yeah, it's, uh, because it's, uh, establishing a clear violation, and then there is an appeals procedure, so it doesn't violate the process.
I'm up for enforcing the ordinances, but I don't, I, I really just don't feel comfortable going on this, this evening, we just received it, compared to today, you know, this afternoon, you know, and, uh, re, reviewing it, you know, as, as possible.
I, I was showing the new voices today, and the, the differences in the charges, and that, what I saw, I didn't like. Uh, there are businesses that, you know, we should be open arms at these businesses coming in, but what we're doing is we're hindering people because of the charges that they include. It went from 400 to 1,200 dollars on the same thing.
Now, tell me, Querry, what charges are you, for what?
For the, for, okay, for the, uh, the road, road loss.
Road loss, okay.
Yeah.
And he's handling the ordinance.
So was that?
I said, the reason he's doing his ordinance.
Yeah. Uh, so I, I just don't know whether it's, it's legal that we can, you know, hinder a business person coming in, you know, just for, I don't know exactly the, the amount, the dollar, about 56 dollars, or what the city's gonna give. Uh, I just, I just.
I do have to, as legal councils say, it is in the franchise agreement, the contract with Republic, so technically any violation, Republic could sue the city for violating their contract. Uh, so it does put the city at legal risk from Republic suing the city.
I, you know, I... I, you know, I've spoken to various, you know, representatives, and based on the information, it's a temporary and not a specific, not a private company, or a private, a customer, where I speak, that's going to be take, that's going to be doing it recurring, you know, such as a, you know, like a permanent residence is basically what it would be, you know, this is the main temporary, you know, for temporary laws.
And they're using the contract that applies temporary laws. I think the...
But I don't think if, you know, I think that's in violation statutory, for them to even put it in there.
It's actually not, I think what you guys are talking about is section, I think it's 364.032, subsection eight, what's that, three, four? Three, four, sorry. A, that's for county solid waste disposal, is the caption of the section, and B, in subsection E, is that, our lady says, nothing in this section shall prevent... Give me one second.
Right here you are.
Yeah, you have the whole... The second sentence of subsection E states, nothing in this section shall limit the authority of Republic agency, including county or municipality, to enforce its grant for franchise or contract for solid waste collection and transportation services within this area.
Chris, would you mind reading, if you're reading it? Read H.
Yeah, something. H says, this section does not apply to a private entity that contracts to provide temporary solid waste disposal services to a merchant property. That's where I understand it coming from, however, the first word is the second sentence is, nothing in this section shall limit the authority.
They'll amend it.
But they didn't amend that section, so the nothing is our contention that it was still controlled. And this could be taken out by negotiations with Republic or Allied Waste to see if they were amended contract. That's the way I would recommend it, to avoid a lawsuit from any side, but in terms of this, that we're talking about right here on the stop work order, this is a general catchall. This would apply to somebody putting lead pipes to a house, or it's best to screen it, and it's not specifically for Republicans.
I want to go ahead and make a motion at the table with this item, just for the, for the reason that I spoke of earlier, that I haven't had the opportunity to review the ordinance in, in, in its entirety.
Before we do that, I know we have some of builders just to debate the decision.
Mayor, Council. We've been, I've been, personally, and a couple of the home builders have been having a problem with this. I've spoken with Chris, I've spoken with Henry Ed. Sandy, Sandy's been on our deal saying we cannot use anybody but Republic, because we have a franchise agreement. I understand, I disagree with what Chris is saying, and I'm willing to take you to court on it, because it was amended in 2007. Chris sent me the paperwork stating, from the Texas Attorney General in 2009, stating that this is correct and we have that power to do that. That section that he's representing there came back in 2007, was amended by the state legislature, stating that it does not entail temporary roll off dumpsters, because the city cannot do that. I also checked with another attorney, and they're saying it cannot be done, it's against the law, so you don't have to force this. The problem we're having is not using Republic, it's using Republic when I can get dumpster in this city for $416 if I don't use Republic. If I use Republic, that same dumpster is going to cost me $1,297.7. This is an actual deal that Paul here received from Republic. Now, Republic will tell you that their fees are $174, and then the dumpster fee is $348, and then there's a fee per ton. What they don't tell you is, on this 9.6 tons, it costs an extra $263. They also don't tell council that they're charging a environmental recovery fee of $281.30. They're also charging a local franchise fee of $57.12. They're charging city taxes, which, of course, we have to pay, $21, and then state tax, $71. So for a total of $1,297 compared to $416, this is killing local contractors, and people coming into this city trying to do work and improve the city. For instance, Benchmark out here, that we're all excited about coming in the River Van that's going to take over and build 25 or 40 homes, he spoke to me, and he said, Mr. Jansky, this is going to cost me $100, $120,000 more to build these homes out here because of dumpster fees. That's just dumpster fees. So that's not inviting to a real, to a developer to come into this city and be overcharged, and for this man and for this lady to tell us that we have to use Republic, or they're going to impound our dumpsters, they're going to fine us, or they're going to go a stop work order. She's been telling us this from the beginning, and it's not possible. Right now, there's not an ordinance correct, only punishment, right? That's why you're doing this.
We could go get an injunction.
That's why you're doing this. So, what I'm saying is, if you need to renegotiate your contract with Republic, and I don't care, you're receiving $57 out of $1,297.
Is that what we're collecting? What are we collecting in franchise?
They, they are, they do it, they do it.
What does the city receive? It's showing here $57.
Yeah, the franchise stuff.
We're receiving the $12,000, that's, okay, Ms. Henry Ed said that there was...
What I'm saying is that one, they get a different check, because when they do for residential, it's one franchise fee, and so this is contracted directly to Republic, who receives a part of that, based on...
Because it's contracted directly to...
They contract, directly to Republic.
Yeah.
It doesn't go through the city office, you have to call Republic.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it, it doesn't make sense, I mean, they can make deals all day long, but, you know, they can, you know, the ally can come back and say, oh, no, there isn't any dumpsters or roll offs in this, in the City of Florisville, or no actuality there could be ten. You know, it's based on, on...
Well, you should build, can you, dumpster can be tied to a permit, to a...
My question is, why can't the city, which all the contracts are drawn, agree with, if you're worried about $57, don't charge your citizens $1,200 for a dumpster? We will be willing to pay $100 permit fee for dumpster fee, if that's what you want. If you're worried about the money, it's worth it to us to pay $100, and to allow us to have a permit on that property while we're doing the construction things. And then if we, if we move to a new house, we'll pay another $100 permit fee, if you want the money, we're not, that's not the problem. It's being charged, just outrageous charges here.
I mean, in my opinion, I mean, that sounds a lot more feasible, because, I mean, you're, you're saving that $700, $800, you know, on up, you know, depending on what, what's being thrown away, and, I mean...
It's going straight to Republic, and Republic has, by having this franchise agreement with y'all, it's a monopoly.
I think...
Like, nobody, we can't even bid on this stuff, we have to use Republic.
And I'm not even sure if the agreement even specifies, you know, that what is broken down as in price, to say that they're, you know, these customers are going to be receiving charges of $57, $238, two, three times, you know, I mean, that's, I think those are just hidden costs to, to the, for us to push on the, the roll offs to the, to the customers.
We have a huge suffer from those, Larry.
Mr. Jansky, how, how long is that building, that you're working on?
About 35 years.
Okay. Here's this gentleman trying to upgrade the city, okay, and we're punishing him by charging more than we should.
You would thank the city with these open arms, like councilman said earlier, hey, what can we do to help you, but instead, you're trying to charge me extra money, anywhere from $800 per dumpster, and now you're threatening to shut me down, you're threatening to fine me and stop my project, because I don't have a Republic dumpster. That's not right.
And the problem is, you may not feel this right from a business perspective, this contract is signed by the City of Florisville. If Republic comes in and finds out that you're allowing them to use another dumpster company for $400 or whatever, they're going to come after the city for the difference, and they're going to say that the city's going to have to pay that.
But then, but then the contractors can also come and try to sue us too.
Right.
I, I think that...
It's going to be more, it's going to, it's going to cost a lot more to, for us to pay for the, for the builders. You're damned if you do, damned if you don't, for lack of better terms.
That's why I said the best solution would probably be if Republic can see what, what they would do about that new contract. By my understanding, right now, this is the governing document that the city has.
And I disagree, because it stays in there, that you cannot do this.
And it stays in section E, that nothing in this section, and that was not amended by the legislature.
Nothing in this section.
You know, section means...
That's where we'll be. But I also want you all to note that this is happening in San Angelo. This is a San Angelo standard kinds. Republic is overcharging the public in San Angelo. And TDS, Texas Disposal Systems, is fighting America. And, as Mr. Gregory, the president and CEO of TDS states, under state laws, cities cannot include a monopoly controlled over construction roll off containers. It is left open for competition. We know this for a long time. Gregory, Mr. Gregory with TDS is providing dumpsters in the City of San Angelo, and Republic has not been able to stop them from doing it because of that law that I quote that he's saying, that I don't know what I'm talking about. So, that's the problem, they're not, Republic is overcharging everybody when they get a franchise agreement. It's happening in San Angelo, and I was also told by TDS, Texas Disposal System, that where Republic does not have the franchise agreement with the city, and they want to provide a temporary roll off. They say they can because of section 36, 364.034, that says they can, that the city cannot regulate that. But it depends on which side the federal public is on, on which rule they're applying.
We can, we can label it, but at the same time, I don't know if, I'm not using the direction, but the direction is to, to work, I think that the trash company, the party, would work with us, has, should anyways, because, you know, both ways, and we're going to have it also one way or one way the other.
I was like, everybody's starting litigation.
Yeah, so is.
I think, I think that we can at least, I mean, there's a motion on the table already, but to, but for us to go ahead and speak with, with Republic, and, you know, find, find a, a common ground to, to say that, that the pricing is a, a little absurd, especially whenever you're having a, a cost by cost comparison, you know, that, you know, obviously, it's not feasible, when the price of, of the, has to be passed on to the consumer, you know, and here we are trying to, you know, beautify the city and, and make things a lot better, you know, this isn't just one, two, three homes, this, this is a, a full development that's going to be going on as well.
Mr. Turner, on the, on the contract, does it say that the fines, they can get up to the fines, they, they talk about fines?
The contract talks about the franchise agreement, and exclusive, that anything that any student has to be Republic, that is a part of the contract. The fine and penalty, nothing to be done with Republic, it's just going to leave you something that's...
But, but we don't have anything, if we're going to go get them a ticket, how do we know how much we're going to give them a ticket for?
Well, actually, the, what you have proposed, the proposal's anywhere up to $500.
Now is proposed, but it hasn't been proposed before.
So, theoretically, he can, he can say that...
So theoretically, what happens now, is I contact the attorney, he goes to a short form, he does an injunction to stop them.
But he can, it's, it's one of those, you know, toss up a coin, is, you know what? I've been, I've had, I'm having a bad day, I'm charged with $500. There's nothing set up, that's what I'm saying, there's nothing set up to say, you know, you're, you're in violation of, of, of...
It's somewhere between 0 to, 0 to 500.
I understand, but there's...
However, right now, there's nothing of a penalty, but you have a contract that you all started negotiating to the city franchise fee, and with that fee, it has exclusive right, which means the only person who can do business in the City of Florisville, the steward company, is Republic.
And, and I can understand that if it were, if, if it was a, a permanent residence with, with their...
What you did, approve a contract like that, what you approved is a contract that has residential, commercial, and your temporary roll off is what you approved.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and...
So all opponents of that, stating that you all signed and agreed, and said that in your franchise agreement, you would honor that, that it would be exclusive for Republic, that's what you all signed, negotiated. Was that in an amendment form, though?
No, that's part of the original contract.
But I see the contract too, that, you know, if, if Mr. Jansky has a contract with another trash company, it gives him a break as long as he's, and then he comes in, and I understand what you're saying too, but I think, we need to go back to the trash company and see if we can just work this together.
But I need to understand, with the franchise agreement, and you're receiving franchise fee, so from a legal perspective, you have to honor the contract, to look your terms and say. All I was trying to do, the staff was trying to do is to enforce the contract with the city council, negotiating. End of session.
I asked for a, a while back, and I haven't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a, a contract.
I think I have a motion to table by Councilman, what, what it is? Second by Councilman...
And with, with Brian that talked to the, from up just there.
Can we set up a meeting for them to, to negotiate?
Yeah, if you want to do a formal meeting, it can be posted, if you want to, the mayor, and as the head, you can do that as well, but that's not the agenda, it's out there right now. You can't put it in the...
Yes.
I think, you know, Dale did a great job as far as explaining everything, but there's one thing that, you know, I, I've got three different invoices from three different roll off dumpster companies that I've used out in the Florisville area. And, I mean, there's, there's strictcy as far as what Republic's charging us, but some of the things that, that are negotiated, and I don't know if you guys knew it, but we don't, we don't have the opportunity to go and see this dumpster weighing at Republic's site. They pick up the dumpster, they take it to their site, now they charge us another fee that I don't think y'all are aware of, but it's after 5,000 pounds, it's four cents a pound, over 5,000 pounds. That can go up real quick. And so, you know, our, our, our fees, with the other roll off companies, there's nothing in place, it's, they, they, they charge a pickup fee and a dump fee, and that's pretty much it. And then, we, I mean, we have no way of telling what we're going to be charged by Republic, because they're charging us for 27.40 per ton, not, not, but then after 5,000 pounds, it's a doc, or it's four cents a pound, that's a, I mean, that goes up, thousand, you know, I mean, it, it can go up real quick. So I just want to make that, and make you guys aware of that, and I think, you know, and I build over in, in Northwest Hills, I build over in River Van, and I've been building here for about five years, so, and I, I mean, I'm building 10 to 12 homes a year. So it does add up as a builder, you know, when you're talking about two dumps per, every house that we build, we have usually about two dumps, and if we're paying, you know, 1,200, I paid 1,292 dollars for my one dumpster, I had two Tiger sanitation dumpsters there before, and the city called me telling me I had to remove it, and I said, I'll remove them, and I'll put Republic. Well, I got the bill from Republic, I nearly fell off, fell over, because the two dumpsters that I had in Tiger sanitation were $541 each, and then I get a bill from Republic for one dumpster for 1,292 dollars, that's a lot of money. So, I just wanted to point that out, and I hope you guys will consider that, I know it's already been, you guys have had a motion, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Council, Mayor Carza.
Chris, there is an ordinance when the franchise fee was implemented, ordinance 288.
Yeah, adopting the franchise agreement.
So it wasn't in the original contract?
No, it is in the, it's 12.0 of the original contract.
And your ordinance was done for?
The ordinance was done to adopt the contract as an ordinance of the city.
Okay. Now we're going to go on to item... We have a motion, it will, and a second, but we have not voted. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, for any favor. The last item on the agenda is item 3, executive session, adjourned to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, to review dumpster roll off policy, correspondence to mayor and enforcement, and city policy towards business, management personnel response, direction for implementation, and advice considering possible litigation. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? I'd like to adjourn to review session. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Morales, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, four zero. The time is eighteen minutes.
Citizens already going to executive session. Communicate and keep it to a low level while coming in.
This is Will.